To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity this morning to serve the people of Adams County and serve in due diligence with efficiency and effectiveness and fairness to all. We ask that you grant us wisdom and good judgment as we affect the business of the county. In Christ's name, amen. All right. Steve, did you have a chance to look at the minutes from October 1st?
Yes, I do. Make motion accept.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion carries. All right. Tony, what all do you have for us?
First thing, we have the allied weekly health insurance claims. Somewhere in this pile. And the amount is eighty-four thousand, five thirty-five, forty-six. Eighty-five, eighty-four, five thirty-five, forty-six. I verified the claimants. And that is actually all I have.
Any questions?
Make motion accept.
Okay, I'll second that. Next, I have, I had emailed all of you the monthly clerk report. I have it here physically if you want to look at it, but I had emailed you that report last week or whatever it was.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion accept clerk report.
Okay. I'll second that to enter the report into record.
We have payroll claims, and the payroll claims are in the amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven twenty-six oh nine, three six seven, seven two six oh nine.
Okay. That's the motion to approve those payrolls.
So moves.
I'll second that. Motion carries.
And next, we have the payroll time card approval. You all should have had that emailed to you as well.
For the department units.
Yep.
Make a motion to accept that.
Okay, I'll second that. To approve payroll time. Positions.
That is all that I have.
Let's think. Well, we should get done thirty-three percent faster.
That's right.
That's it, Tony?
That's all I have. I think anything else I had, I've handed off to Clayton to do under this time.
Okay. Okay, we'll try not to ask questions today.
You're running two-thirds power today, so.
All right, we're gonna go thirty-three percent faster.
All right, well, good morning. Couple of different items that I have. Just an update on the HSIP, that's that sixty grand. Endoc has accepted the application at this point, so there's no further questions. So now it's just a waiting game.
Good job.
So, the way that grain is set up is the projects to be completed in calendar year twenty-six. So, it won't take a lot of time in making that announcement, I don't imagine. So, it's gonna be fairly quick. Once I, if, once I hear something, if I do, we'll have to move fairly quickly.
So, we don't have to wait?
Contracts and agreements.
We won't have to wait till twenty-twenty-six to start?
No, we'll need to be moving fairly quickly on it. So, they'll, they'll want us to keep making contract negotiations for that. So, as soon as I hear anything, we'll be moving meeting by meeting to kind of move along with that. So, just to kind of keep that, we'll have to hit the ground running when and if that happens. Uh, the second item is just the bridge inspection phase two. I do have your copy, there's a copy in my office. One of those maps, there's a map included with this as far as the conditions. So, this is one for the bridge.
Do we want to keep that file in the cabinet here?
Yep, I would leave one of those here, and then I've got another physical copy in my office, and then a digital copy is saved on for the county server. So, that'll be kind of our redundancy for it. It doesn't make sense to get four or five copies and try to hide it all in the same building. It doesn't quite do the same purpose. So, we're at two locations and in the clouds, so we should be safe. But, that has been received and accepted. Next item is just Bridge Forty. That's on Washington Street. I've been out there earlier this morning and yesterday. I did start work on Monday, chipping that out. I'm expecting work to be completed by Friday. And I started to know when to finish it, but it's kind of surprising. One of the holes we had was about pumpkin or basketball-sized patch there, but you could have set this table in the back concrete that was underneath that. So, it just, the water just propagated underneath that deck and just spread out. So, when you're seeing little potholes like that in a bridge deck, the ability for the water to migrate laterally into damage. So, I'm glad to get it caught before we had a more serious issue with it. Certainly, I want to try to be more proactive and attack those on a regular basis, hopefully trying to do rehabs when it's a small patch, a small chip versus having such a large area. So, if you have time, feel free to stop out.
So, did that affect any of the structural members or just the deck?
Just the deck and the steel on that deck. So, the beams that are underneath that were still safe. We were, obviously, when you start to do an exploratory surgery like that, you're not sure what you're gonna find. But thankfully, it wasn't, wasn't altogether bad, but it's not great. I would have gladly have done that five years ago. That would have been certainly better.
So, we might have lost a Volkswagen, but not an Escalade.
Yeah, there you go. So, but, we're gonna have a little more chipping work and a little more patchwork than what I would have liked to have had on that, but it's, I'm glad we did that versus having to do a full superstructure replacement on a structure like that. So, forty, fifty thousand dollar projects, better than a four-hundred or five-hundred thousand dollar project.
So, with the new sealing process, I assume that once this new bridge deck overlay is on there, will we go back in there, will the Brad's guys go back in there and seal it as a new?
That's the plan, is to use that side lane sealer to seal the bridges, and then as we see different issues, then we'll go out and sound them with the break chain, and then I can mark them out and then do other preventative maintenance projects like that. So, hopefully, I can do three to five bridges every year, just go out and inspect them, chain them, and then go ahead and schedule patching. Now, I'll inspect more than five, but I'd like to be patching three to five like this every year. Just, I can't do them when they're this large. This one was, this one needed to be done desperately before we had to do a full overlay on it. So, as we'll talk about in a similar overlay project.
So, going in the past, when this bridge was new, or had that been sealed, it would have avoided some of this?
It would have, it would have delayed it, certainly, and we would have had less water getting into it. Once you've got a pothole like that, then that protection, that ceiling, isn't necessarily there anymore. So, that's when you need to start doing some patches and then sealing them. So, sealing it will keep those patches from needing to be done, at least delaying them. So, just good preventative maintenance. Like I said, forty, forty to fifty thousand dollar project beats a four, five hundred thousand or fifteen thousand dollar project to redo the top of that bridge. So, uh, twenty, twenty-five small structures. We got a concrete box, bring, bridge quotes were delivered on Friday, so I got all of our quotes from the different suppliers that I had requested quotes from. Um, on page two, the staple there, you can kind of see the list of structures that we requested quotes. That's my plan to award to one, two, three, four, five of these structures now, because I do have the right of way for those five. The other four that I have, I'm not going to award at this time. I'm gonna try to buy some of these with this year's money yet. But, that is the quotes and the different suppliers that I receive quotes from, from St. Regis, Metal Coverts, Civilcon, Lindsay Precast, and Mack Industries. Mack Industries is a Precast company out of Ohio. A number of years ago. And you can see the different quotes that they provided me for those, but I'll contact them ordinarily with your approval. And I have requested quotes last Friday from contractors for installation of all of these. We'll only proceed with the ones that we have right of way off. I'm just gonna request your approval on the quotes as received.
All right, I'll second that.
Very good. Last two items are kind of, are gonna be, are similar. Endoc has a federal aid call out for just general bridge and local projects that will open in November. I will close the first week of December. To stay ahead of that schedule, I've put together some cost estimates and grants and application paperwork for your consideration. The first project is Bridge Ninety-three. It's a bridge replacement project that we've actually been working on as a local project act, but it is eligible for federal funds for its replacement. The, I have an updated cost estimate from EJSPLN that we've been under contract with. The plan would be to request federal funds for both professional engineering, utility, relocation. We have some overhead electric that's still got holes in the area. Construction and construction inspection. The total project cost based on the EJSPLN estimate is two million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. I'm, to do the project locally wouldn't have costed that much, but to seek the federal funds, the federal process has certain requirements that essentially ballooned the project. And I'm not satisfied with proceeding as we were before, using a hundred percent local funds for a project because it is still more than I'm comfortable with and these funds aren't available. The eighty-twenty match as a grant program allows, would reduce our local funds match down to five hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Certainly, none of these dollar amounts are anchored solid in stone. The percentages would be, but if I'm able to, certainly, my goal would be to reduce the local, these contracted amounts, both on professional engineering or preliminary engineering facilities and construction inspection, those I have more control over in the project. Now, council did approve this during their meeting, and what I would need from you is an approval on both our internal grant application paperwork as well as a financial commitment letter. You'll have, actually, I'll give these to you. I don't think you have the updated letters. They'll confuse them with all the paperwork.
All right.
There's a lot of forms they got.
There's a lot of forms. So, that's the, this and this go together. So, this letter and this would go together, and then?
Here's the other one.
And then this would go with?
Let's keep them separate.
Keep them separate. So, I'll keep those two separate. So, I would need approval on this grant application, that financial commitment letter. And that's for Bridge Ninety-three. Bridge Ninety-three, yes.
Okay. Do you want them approved separately?
That's completely up to you. I'll talk about the second one if you'd like.
Do we want to finish this one first?
Yeah, we can finish this one if you want to go ahead and?
I'll make the motion. That we pass that. All right, I'll second that.
And that, and that one is, set as priority number one, and that does let us rank the projects when we do the grant application, so they're not coupled together. They can't approve those separately. My plan is then for my second application, or my number two priority on the list, would be for Bridge One-O-Five. That carries triple zero over Blue Creek, just north of County Road Three Hundred South. Then, it's a bridge, twenty-eight-foot wide bridge. That was a question that came up during council, was how old it was. It was originally built in the late fifties, early sixties, and has been rehabbed back in two thousand and seven. The overlay that was put on in two thousand and seven is really worn away and is in need of repair. It's been on my bridge asset management plan list for future, but I haven't been able to really schedule a funding to look for it. With the asset management plan being federally approved, I'd like to seek federal funds for its rehabilitation. Now, with that, it would be a mill hydro demo.
That's still Ninety-three, standing.
And a bridge and deck overlay of that bridge.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
If I could get Stan to go ahead and sign that, we'll be done with Ninety-three.
Okay.
Then we'll, I'll hand over One-O-Five.
Yep, that's fine.
Because you're gonna take one whole set of copies, I'll take the other set of copies.
One of all four documents.
So, I get them done one at a time and make sure that?
That is fine.
They don't get, uh, sometimes I've had a habit of mixing them up.
We don't want to confuse Tony.
No, don't confuse Tony.
No.
I was confusing that with the council meeting with everything.
Not a problem. I'll, I will wait for the rest of the description here.
I think as soon as Steve, Steve probably only needs to sign the letter portion. This is only, that's just one. You'll miss your chairman.
Yep.
All right. There's Ninety-three.
I, in a second, I can hand you yours back, Nate. Yeah, here you go, Nate. This should be all that you need, and I'll have, I'll keep the other one. Now, you can continue with One-O-Five. Thanks for pausing for me.
No. So, the, um, the second bridge again is Bridge One-O-Five, triple zero over Blue Creek, Three South area. I know there's discussions about the future of triple zero, but this would not necessarily have a negative impact on whatever you do in the future for that road section. I think the bridge is adequate. The substructure is very, has scored very well based on inspection reports. So, it really just needs to have some preventative maintenance done to the surface of it. And it's not just sealing, it's the erosion from the buggy wheels because of the nature of the traffic. So, maybe review the wearing surface on that bridge. Based on the early estimates that I have on that, we have a total project cost of about eight hundred seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. It's in the budget right now. Seeking six hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred dollars of federal funds, leaving a local, local match that we would be obligated to of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. That is the budget that I'm prepared, and I've gone through this with a third-party consultant to double-check some of the numbers to make sure that we'd be in good shape for it. There is a more detailed cost estimate of that project that I've prepared as well. And this does include inflation between today's estimates and when we're anticipating the project could be done. And this would be our number two priority in the application list. It's not a safety, it's a preventative maintenance project, so.
So, neither of these, well, obviously, the first one, but the second one wouldn't be a good match for community crossings either. I mean, there's?
The second one could be, but we're, like, the problem I've been dealing with is that we're just so overprogrammed for community crossings. So, it, this would, what, the goal with seeking these funds is that if we're trying to lock in federal dollars out, five years out in the future, I've got community crossings obligated for projects that are already in design currently for at least the next three to four years. So, I don't really have?
And these projects aren't quite as urgent, so we can?
Yep. Ninety-three can wait, and then One-O-Five, I'd rather not wait very long, but I'd have to, to try to accelerate this. You don't have to do it with a hundred percent local funds, and it would, it wouldn't cost us a hundred and seventy-four. We'd be closer to four, five hundred thousand of local dollars. So.
That's, I'm gonna make questions. Okay, second there. This is gonna be the same as last time, there's two different sets.
So, construction won't start on Bridge Ninety-three until twenty-thirty?
Possibly. It'll come down to what the funding schedule is with Endoc. We do have survey done and some work that was done under the existing contract with EJSPLN, but we essentially are gonna have to break that agreement, terminate it, and then move on with that if we're awarded federal funds. And then we just have to see which calendar year Endoc has federal dollars available. Some communities get allocated funds and then have to delay their project. If we're able to be ahead of some of that schedule, then we might be able to move that. So, but that just depends on the ability of my consultants permitting agencies in the line. I'd love to do both of these, certainly sooner. One-O-Five would probably be a better candidate to go faster because it should not require utility relocation, it should not require additional right-of-way. So, there's some big phases in time that doesn't need to be included in the project. So, that would be my goal, is to try to seek that one. That's why it shows twenty-twenty-nine. I'd love to see that moved up this few more years.
Can you switch them if you have to?
As far as priority or calendar years? If, if Endoc has funds and you're ready, then they will, they will move things up. They don't like moving things out.
But, I mean, if you asked them to move One-O-Five up to?
As long as they've got, as long as they've got funds in that fiscal year, then you're, you have the ability to, to move things out. But, once you move it up, you're committed, so don't do it lightly. You can arrive early to the party. Take that and leave this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had a question kind of for you and Brad. Somebody asked me about putting a flashing stop sign at Pickway in One-O-One.
That's Endoc.
And it's, it would, it would be a stop sign for, on Pickway Road, though. Anyway, we could?
That's still Endoc.
Anyway, we can upgrade that. We've had another accident there the other day from people that didn't stop. Plus, in the past, we've had an accident where, uh, high, real high casualties there.
Yeah, that, that, so basically, anywhere in the county, any road leading up to a state highway, those are Endoc stop signs and also like the stop head signs, those are theirs also, just leading up to a highway.
Yep.
I mean, I know there's been more accidents.
Can we put anything in addition to their signs?
I don't know what you're gonna put ahead of it, I don't know. So, I know, I do know there's stop head signs out there. That'd be something to ask Endoc, that, you know, see if they would?
I know the state's been doing some safety audits of intersections that have higher crash ratings based on the per capita, but when they did an audit of other similar intersections, but the state controls the intersections. The intersection controls on the state routes are the state's. We don't have jurisdiction to put anything in there right-of-way or modify that, so.
Do we have a contact with Endoc that would?
We could request a meeting if you would like to sit down with some Endoc representatives, and, and there's a couple of individuals that I would, that I would link if you wanted to, we wanted to make an inquiry of what the date was, because if you've got requests from your citizens, our citizens here, then that's something that we could try to do so that we can at least inform them of what decision was made by the state regarding that. And then we could also request the actual crash incident reports or whatever, the crash report.
Yeah, and there's?
To kind of see what was behind that, because sometimes people say, what happened or didn't happen, and then that's not being reflected in the police reports.
Well, this kind of came from somebody that, on emergency services, not, not a chief or anybody, but?
Yep. No, unfortunately, it's not ours to?
And maybe to?
If we could, if we could take it a step further and do an inquiry, and I don't know that, there may even be other intersections where that's applicable, but I don't know.
Well, the other thing too is we need to talk to the sheriff, because I'm pretty sure it was like a year ago we had something happen, and I can't remember if he talked to them or what. We can ask him, too.
Yeah.
So, I'll reach out to the sheriff and see if he, can't remember what they told him, but I could reach out to him, he can reach out to the Endoc contacts we have.
Yep.
Yeah, if, if we could maybe check into taking that a step further and see if we can?
Sure.
Make those intersections safer, so?
Yeah. There's channels that we can, we can try to get the answers for the public, something like that.
Good. All right, I appreciate it. And now, back to the business of today.
All right, morning, guys.
Morning.
The first thing I have is a permit from Indiana Michigan Power on County Road Three Hundred North between Four and Five Hundred West. Pleasantville Church right there, just along in addition. So, I and M's actually, there's already a pool there that they're gonna put an electric entrance into the building. So, there's a pool there, they're just gonna put in a new pool and do what they do to use power to it. And I looked, I measured it, and they'll, they'll be good.
Good. What township is that in? Is that Kirkland or? Address or something, something so I can put it in here?
Three Hundred North between Four and Five Hundred West. Let me see if they put an exact address in there.
That's good enough.
That's good enough.
Sounds like?
Okay, forty-five oh four west, Three Hundred North, if you want that, so.
I don't know if that's down in the French township or what?
No, not in France, I know that.
Kirkland still?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we got a motion to?
I did.
Okay. All right. I'll second that.
Thank you. And then while you guys are doing that, I'm not sure, if you remember the times you guys have been down there, the building where we store all the dump trucks at, parked in there at an angle? I don't know if you kind of remember, we have those heavy-duty floor drains down through the middle of that building. Kind of remember that? I don't know if you remember, there was a couple of them that were broke, and the guys would go in and we'd put like wood under it, hold it up. So, now we have like multiple more that are broken. Not, the grates aren't broke, the cement from all the years of salt and that, and just everything erodes away, and it doesn't have a lift to hold those grates. So, anyhow, I've reached out and got an idea from a local concrete contractor, you know, just how we should do, what, what we need to do. So, anyhow, I've spoken with them. This project is probably gonna, more than likely gonna be over the, well, regulations or whatever. So, I'm asking you guys today for your permission to go ahead and, all we gotta do is send out quotes to three of our local contractors that we know. And another thing, too, I better add in, I don't know if you ever remember, behind that building, it's all stone. Well, when we pressure wash stuff outside, it just muds up, throws stuff all over the stones. So, why, they're there, we would also like to put in a big concrete, just a pad that we could clean on. That way, it's all contained right there, and we'll have a drain in it, and we'll have stuff runs to that drain, not our inside drain so much, and then we can always clean that out whenever it gets?
Because you really don't have a wash bay inside, do you?
No. Just wherever they're at in the building. Yeah. Like I said, normally, they pressure wash, they go outside.
Yeah.
So, I, basically, I'm just asking your permission?
Is there a tile running to, where you're gonna put this, to get rid of that surface water?
No, so what we're gonna do is there is a waterway there, so it'll be one of those, we'll set a pit there, and it's one of them where the outlet tile will be up here, so all the heavy stuff will go down here in the bottom, and then the water will run out the top into our waterway there and our stones.
Do you have to get the surveyor to look at that?
I'm not sure. Me, the surveyor or?
No, I'm?
Building planning?
No, Mike.
Yeah. I can ask you, but it's, it's our, it's our waterway that just runs through our driveway.
Oh, okay.
It's like, it's, it's all stone, it just?
I was just concerned about the surface water.
Yeah. All right, now, it just, it all goes there anyhow. But this way, we at least trap the heavier debris. But I'll, I'll say something to you.
Okay.
Just to make sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see what you come up with. You think they'll have to cut some of that floor out, probably?
Yeah. So, not to take time, but real quick, what they're thinking is they're gonna have to go back eight feet on both sides, and they'll make a cut, and they'll get rid of all that concrete, and then, you know, they'll tie it back in, and then they'll pour all-new, pour new drain and everything. And they're gonna try and beef up those edges where those grates sat a little bit, too. So, yeah.
So, you have to get all-new grates there, too?
No. Uh, we're only gonna need about five new ones. We can reuse all the rest of them. We can reuse all the rest of them.
Good. Okay, well, I'll see what you come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And that and that, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Rick, what do you have for us? All good news?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have the idea on talking about tweeting about walking around the insurance company.
Oh, yeah.
It went well. Get all those documents they wanted. Very impressed with the server roof. Some of the door lock pads that we got on. It went well. Forgot to mention that last week. Transfer switch, we got it in the basement here last Thursday. And it's put on the pad. Monday, Columbus Day, we're closed. The power will be shut off here approximately 8:00 AM. And then we also will shut the power off. We can do that manually over at the courthouse Monday. Get some wire and an afterglow server room for that generator.
That's gonna be a busy day.
Yeah.
If they're working over there or working here by themselves.
I could be over there shampooing here. Kind of wanna explain about how the power is here. So approximately 8:00 AM Monday, which we're closed, it'll be shut down then. But I have to call them back by 2:00 PM to get it back on for that day. So in other words, to assure that it gets back on, we'll come reconnect it. And, but I gotta call them back by 2:00 PM. But I should know, talking with those guys maybe before that, I'll, how much, you want it off? Turn it back on at 4:00 PM. But I should know. Over there, it just means we can shut that off by hand over there to do what we gotta do at the courthouse. Another potential date for here for the power to be off is November 2nd. That's on a Saturday. That'll be a very, very long day to have it on. Should get everything all tied in, hopefully functional.
What are they doing here next week on the 12th?
Next week, what they're doing...
I mean, if they got, cause you said they gotta have the power off twice. Once next Monday and then once...
So Monday, what they're gonna do is shut the power off. The big, the big lines coming in, they're gonna push that back. And they got something that's gonna hold that back so that when they run the wire from that transfer switch in, it bypasses it all. That's why it's getting shut off Monday. And that shouldn't be an all day thing, but anyway. It may be two hours, it may be four hours, however long it takes them to do that. And then that potential date of November 2nd, that'll be the full blown tying everything in to the generator and the transfer switch down there. Next week, they wanna, they're gonna start running wire down that alley too, down the conduit.
Oh, yeah.
Except for Wednesday, we have food bank. But they'll be working next week pulling that wire. I think it's supposed to be good by Thursday.
I forget which way, are they pulling it from the transfer switch out to the generator?
That's how they're gonna do it.
Will that affect dispatch then?
As long as that generator is on, we're good. And I'm gonna fire that up before they shut the power off. I'm gonna fire that panel. But it's, it's been functioning, it's been working anyway yesterday. This morning, over at the courthouse, where the generator from Golden Meadows has come on, we got that all dug out. I'm having to put some conduit in for a potential fiber coming in the building. Like two minutes, so they were digging that out to put in there. That way Mike needs it, we got it to run it in there.
Yeah.
The concrete should be poured maybe around noon over there. And then I'm hoping to get that generator moved. See how long he wants to leave that cure over there. But if it ain't by the end of the week, next week, to get it set, moved out of there and put over. They have that disconnected out there already. Yep. Transfer switch that was in Golden Meadows is removed, mounted in the basement. Everything, all they have to do is really pick that up and get it over again. The service electric's gonna do that. So it's coming along. Hopefully that's, I want that project done before it ends. There is early voting going on over there. I mean, the timing of the concrete, but it just... But people have been getting it out, they're good, they're, got it all taped on.
Very good.
That's, that's what we're gonna want. Monthly. Really trying to stay away from any workday of getting that power shut off, so... Hopefully it lines up November 2nd, we'll shut it off, we got things going on. It'll be, it'll be a big day Monday, just to get those wires pushed back and be able to beat that.
Yeah, no doubt. Alright, is that someone? Any questions? Good. Alright, thank you, Rick.
Rick, those keys are up in your tray.
Oh, okay. What do you have for us?
One guy still has it.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
This is the time where we look at the monthly report. Tony, I'm giving you a copy of that. In front of you, everything balances. We're actually in pretty fine shape with everything. And I can answer any questions that we have on anything specific.
Taxes coming in good?
Yes, taxes as of this morning for the fall, we have over $4 million collected already for the fall and another almost 16 million to go as of this morning. So overall, we're at just shy of 60% of spring and fall. Good shape.
So that's, the date for fall taxes is November...
November 12th. Normally it would be November 10th because, because Veterans Day falls on Monday, the 11th. They feel that it would be better to have another day, the state does this all across Indiana. It's November 12th. Excuses for anybody, basically, we wanna make sure that we get them all in.
Very good. Yeah, the report looks good. Thank you, Eddie.
He needed a motion to put this report...
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, seconded that to put this report in the record.
Okay. We talked about the property taxes, those are all coming in well. We appreciate all that. The tax sale for the 11 parcels that we have, that is Thursday, October 31st, the end of this month, at 10:00 AM. And again, we have 11 parcels that are on there. We're having people ask about this and that. We have one lady, a very nice lady, but she, she wanted to know the particulars about it and she wanted to do all this on her own. And we said, the best thing I can tell you to do, and actually Kathy didn't, was talking to her, but the very best thing we can tell you to do is get a lawyer to guide you through this whole process.
What time is that sale again?
10:00 AM. Because, you know, she just wants to get a deal on a house and move in for half a nothing. Well, there's a lot more to it than that, as we all know. And we're not, we don't give out legal advice from the office. We just say, hey, get it, get it, get it in that file. That's all good. And then we talked a little bit in the council meeting this morning about interest on particular accounts, and I have a detailed list of all that. I just wanted to reassure you, and I hope that got through the council. I have that money for, for Golden Meadows proceeds in the highest rate situation. It has gone down a touch, but CD rates have gone down more than that. So I would've had to move it anyway regardless, but it's still in the very best spot. I will do what has been asked and figure out all that interest since its inception when we first sold the land and give Brianna a good number to transfer. It don't, it don't matter, and I understand what you want. You want it all in one place. Right now, it is in the fund in one part. That fund is funded by two separate parts, county general money and the segregated money that I have at Trust in Indiana. We could put it all in one spot.
Well, for the discussion, you know, you, you track that interest...
Yes.
Even though it, it's technically not in the fund, you can still track that easier than it is to move it.
Because, because I don't deal with funds. That's the auditors. I deal with the bank accounts. So it's in two separate bank accounts, basically.
And when it comes time for capital expenditures, you will be able to attribute the interest earned off of that fund.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And if they wanna transfer at that time, let them transfer. But they decided what they decided.
Yeah, so, and we can, we can do that easy enough. I'll have those numbers to Brianna this afternoon.
Okay. Well, very good.
That is all I have unless you have anything further. I, I will say one more thing. A couple of years ago, my security camera that I have in the office, you've seen the monitors in my office where I can see all that. Those were set up originally with innovative electronics. Mike had said, Mike, that he wanted to get that camera put on our server to where we don't have integrated electronics, or innovative electronics monitoring that. We are paying money out that I don't know that we need to be doing anymore for a somewhat antiquated system. Tom had put that in during his term. And it, it was okay at that point. It needs to be better than that. We've already run the wires that it needs. And we have all that. It would just take a couple of rather inexpensive cameras mounted up to be able to do it through our circuits. So I would, I'm gonna get some numbers together on that and ask you to, let me approve that, security wise.
Eddie, you mean Innovative Concepts, or is there another...
Innovative, I did say that. Innovative Concepts.
You're right.
I didn't know there was another company by a similar name.
Innovative Concepts, my apologies. Just to have the lady, those cameras are relatively inexpensive. Just a few hundred dollars to get a really good quality cameras. And I think it would be a big benefit, that more than anything to my office would be a stepping up.
Well, as always, right up past Mike. See what he says.
Well, he approved doing this two years ago and nothing's happened in two years. So I'll do it again.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, if he's, he's already on board. So what do you have to do, just get quotes or what, what do you?
Do that.
Cause I, I don't know if you need anything from us to do that.
Just approval to move ahead, shake the bushes a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep. Sitting in the back of the room, so...
They're just dropping it in.
Well, they'd sit back there acting all innocent and everything. We don't know more about trailers. We don't wanna know, but they're done with this thing.
You're welcome.
There's the two votes.
Thank you.
For omission, you can't tell. So, last time we were here, you gave us a verbal approval to purchase a new Incident Command slash decom trailer. So we had gotten a quote from Indiana Trailer Sales, which was the trailer we would like to go with. And then we also got a quote from Ridge Trailer in Woodburn, which was a little bit higher. Trailers are so very, very similar, just different brands. But we would like to go ahead and go with Indiana Trailer Sales. I think it's $9,300.
$9,500.
$9,500.
So really, they're both specked out the same, same size axles and everything?
Exactly.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's quite a difference.
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars.
And we have looked at the one a couple of times at Indiana Trailer Sales and feel like the size is exactly what we need for the county and something that we can make and handle pulling ourselves. Or if we don't use it, any of the other first responders in the county are able to pull it because it's more of a basic trailer hitch than the other one was.
I didn't look, I assumed it's got electric brakes.
Yeah.
They'll be putting on a brake controller on the Tahoe as well. The Tahoe is number one.
Oh, good. How do they do that now? Do they do that as an in-dash controller or is it something on the pedal or how do they?
They will, it'll get hooked up electronically at the front.
Cause I know they used to actually put something physically on the brake pedal. Like Ford's got that in-dash.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. He said that when we do, who would have picked up the trailer, they can install it same day. It just takes a few minutes.
So how do you intend to pay for that? Are you gonna ask for an additional appropriation or how do you?
We are hoping that since the, the original trailer sold for $4,700 and that went back into county general, we're hoping that we can use those funds and the commissioners will pay for the balance.
Cause we were gonna look at our equipment.
Yes.
There was like $29,000 in there.
I'll make a motion, we use that as a legitimate fund to pay for the trailer that they were wanting from Indiana Trailer Sales.
$9,500.
Yes, $9,500.
Yeah, $29,985. I wonder how, so would the $4,700 come out of county general?
$4,700 stays in county general.
So we would take the entire...
The full amount out of that $29,000 or whatever.
Okay.
I guess what was discussed last week?
Yes, it was.
Okay, alright, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And you both voted yes, right?
Pardon?
He voted your approval. He just seconded it.
Yes, I did, yeah.
He's not used to that rule.
Yeah, nobody cares when I...
So when we were here last time, we talked about trying to get companies to help us while doing the inside. We did contact Rev and they're 99% sure they're gonna take care of all the materials and lever...
Wow.
To outfit the inside of the trailer. We haven't got anything in writing yet, but we've been working with Ken Robertson, who used to work at Delco. And he keeps asking us questions of what different things we want. And I told him we have a needs list and a want list. And he said, forget about that want list, just put it all on the needs list. So that's what we did. We put a list together, we sent it to him, we sent him the specs. We sent him the floor plan of the trailer. We sent him the floor plan of the trailer with all the dimensions on it and we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Very good. That's exciting.
And then the other thing we've talked about is we want to get a liner in the trailer prior to sending it to Rev to help protect the floor in it and the ramp. So we got a quote from the vans for twelve hundred dollars to do that. So right now, we don't have anyone funding that, but are, we're going to try and see if they're willing to help out with this project. And if not, then the community foundation grant opens tomorrow. We're going to apply for that because we want that done before Rev does anything to the inside. And then I think it'll be ready to give us.
Good. Very good. So, yeah, by the time it gets cold, you'll have a trailer. And where did you say that'll stay?
The sheriff's department. And that we could store it there.
Good.
Yeah, and that'll be nice because it'll be in our location, you know.
Yeah, sure.
Which we can get into twenty-four hours a day where if it was stored at Monroe, we just had to get ahold of somebody to get us into the fire department to be able to get it.
All right, very good.
And we brought a visitor with us. Jeff. He isn't on the agenda, but he tagged along with us.
Oh, for being safe.
I mean, hi, Jeff.
Hi. I think in a couple, a month ago, we talked about the burn ban. So the chiefs have requested that be enacted.
Okay.
I have the ordinance that Mr. Burry had typed up before, but I didn't get to talk to him like you and I had talked about somehow wording it to where, okay, let's say it and that's enacted tomorrow and we get a bunch of rain or enough rain to cite it next week. We take it out and then first of November, we're back in it. So we're not back and forth. I don't know if that can be done that way.
In fact, the key is it has to be published in order to be able to impose fines. We've got to have something in place that is published, so.
So would the one you typed up originally work for that? We have to modify it if we're going to do something like that. It's got to be in place. Something's got to trigger it and that takes some sort of action by the commissioner.
So would would it have to be published both ways when we put it on and take it off both?
We'll we'll see if there's a way to, if there's just. When you put something like that in place, it has to be done by by ordinance and the ordinance has to be published because it has penalty requirements and fines. So if we do that, then, you know, the commissioners could deactivate it. The question is, can it be activated without, you know, official meaning of the court commissioners? That's what I have to figure out. At a minimum, you'd have to contact the commissioners and they would have to say, okay, we'll trigger it, but then you'd still have to publish.
Right.
Well, I guess in my mind, it all seemed like if we could do it similar to the way we do a snow emergency. You know, on the recommendation of the sheriff and the emergency management agency and the chairman of the commissioners, boom, it's in effect. I don't know if you can do it like that.
Well, yeah, you can, but you've got to understand that as far as fines go, until the commissioners take some sort of action on a snow emergency, we don't, we don't have fines. It's just public service announcement and it's a weather condition, and this is a weather condition as well. So as far as just imposing the ban, I suppose you could do that, but I think the issue is actually citing people and finding people and having an ordinance in place. Because when we do snow emergency, that's not ordinance. Right? So we'll we'll check on, we'll see what we can do. I understand the issue because you have, you know, we like, it just depends.
Yeah, like last time, we, we had two inches of rain and it's.
Right, so I I guess the question is, do we need to do that right now, put it in place?
Grass-wise, we're okay, but fields, we need to do it as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Because I know they had a chicken manure, I believe, on Saturday that flared up, that caught the field on fire because of the wind and they burned a couple acres. I don't know exactly how many. I'm not going to say, but I know.
From a combustion?
Yes, the wind, there was enough heat in the manure pile that the wind actually flared it up, so there was active flame and then caused the field on fire around.
Wow. So what what would we be able to do right now to that effect?
Is that the, is that the ordinance that Mark prepared for this this round?
Well, no, this was for the previous one. There's no date in September.
You want to look at it?
Yeah. I wanted to just look at it quick just to, and I mean.
Are you wanting this to go into effect?
I mean, you wanting us to put this into effect today? Well, I don't know if we can without.
That might be, he needs to work at that.
Well, I had a question had here on campfires. Is that for like campgrounds too and everything?
It would be everything, yes.
I didn't know.
Depending how that is, I just didn't read all of it today. I just found it on, printed it off the front of the bar, so.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to modify the way that reads in order to be able to have the commissioners to trigger it without having to.
And that's what Stan and I had talked about.
So there's, there's nothing we could do today unless they want to pass this one.
I wouldn't pass that one because the way that's written puts a ban in place now, which is not conditions.
At the very least, you can have the newspaper report that you would rather they not.
Right.
Have burns in fields until next week when they can address this properly. Well, you would like, you would like a burn ban right now.
Yes, the the chiefs are in consensus.
Right now?
Yeah. As soon as we can.
So why wouldn't we put that in effect?
I misunderstood. You're saying you want to, you want to put a ban in place now based upon conditions that exist now?
Yes, yes.
Correct, yeah. In that case, you can pass that.
Right, can they pass that without Steve Bailey being here though? Or have to have to introduce it?
Yeah, what you could do is you, the commissioners could vote and say, look, we're instituting a public awareness burn ban. We're instituting a burn ban right now and that way it's in the press.
Yeah.
Go ahead and introduce that ordinance and then when Steve gets back, we can pass it. But it's effective now. You're saying don't burn now.
Yeah.
Thing about ordinance is you pass an ordinance on the same day that it's introduced, you need all three.
So you're just introducing it today?
Yeah, introduce it and then declare that it's a burn ban. Please don't burn, that's the message in public, please don't burn and put the ordinance in place.
Well, on on recommendation of all Adams County Fire Chiefs to the commissioners, the commissioners are instituting that.
I have a motion to have that back on the record.
I'll just introduce it very my time.
And then also introduce that number.
Yeah.
Or you want to just do it right now?
I would introduce that.
All right, so it'd just be the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two four twenty. Short title reads, An Ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, County of Adams, State of Indiana, which declares a ban on open burning due to drought conditions until further notice. Whereas thirty-six eight two four, authorize the county to adopt an ordinance for the protection of public health, safety and welfare. Whereas the Adams County Director of Emergency Management has requested that a ban on open burning be put in place immediately due to severe dry conditions, now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners, County of Adams, State of Indiana as follows. Purpose of this ordinance is to to declare and institute an immediate ban on open burning activity and the igniting of fireworks within Adams County, Indiana, until this ordinance is rescinded by the Adams County Board of Commissioners. Open burning is hereby prohibited in Adams County effective immediately. Definitions, the one definition in this ordinance would be open burning, which is igniting any material on the ground, ground in a burn barrel, fire ring, fire pit, brush pile or other outdoor location. The penalty for violation of this ordinance will be a fine and judgment of up to five hundred dollars.
I would just have them, have them approve that ordinance or I would say go ahead and just adopt that ordinance subject to confirmation by Steve Bailey next week.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
They can sign it today, but then we'll just let Steve Bailey sign it and then we'll just advertise it after Steve signs it next week. Then we advertise.
But I would make a copy of it, give it to the press, serve funding those.
Okay. Yep. Steve's in Orlando. He's not going to understand a burn ban.
They have a water ban down there.
Bring some of that with you.
Yeah, but not too much. I feel just that's right.
We might need to change the dates of the, same, you still have September. We'll wait till the date ended though.
So how do, how do we do that when it rains? Do we have to officially take this off or is it just like, no, it rained, we don't worry about it?
Well, when the, I guess when the chief's dumber EMA comes and says we don't need the burn ban anymore, then they just have to request it and then you rescind that ordinance. Obviously, Mark and I will look into whether we can have some other type of ordinance to where it's more an informal activation and deactivation, but for now, yeah, yeah, it'll just be a rescission. It'll be a rescission.
I mean, to your point, if we're going to find people for burning, then it needs to be.
Yeah, regardless of.
An officially adopted ordinance.
Well, doesn't have to, yeah, we're going to look into that. At a minimum, it definitely has to be published in the paper because Indiana code states that if you have any type of ordinance that is going to put forth a penalty for violation, it always has to be published.
Yeah.
So basically, in the middle of the week, it'll be enacted or after.
Well.
So I can relay it to the other chiefs if they ask.
It's effective. As far as.
Yes, confirm. What's that?
And you can go out and tell people to rake their turkey piles apart. Go out and tell people to rake their turkey. Unless you have people on the fire button.
I have some people I can say.
Or maybe it's an emergency.
We got masks.
Steve's side.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
So I would just keep it until next week.
I'll just remember that next week we'll have to put in the paper.
All right, Mark, what do you have for us?
Some things that Angie super says, some things that Angie already passed.
There's a clerk. I found something they didn't like. I don't even know what, where, but somewhere. Yeah, redone or just. We did, and we need it.
Correct. Very good. That's about the quickest we got him out of here. Okay, Mark or Clayton, one or the other, on the next agenda line, I had a recommendation on proposal to change a zone map for Sunshine Construction Company located at four forty-six West Washington Street, Monroe, to go from an R one to a C two, section thirty-three of Washington Township. Also, Richard and Ryan Miller requesting zoning at sixty-nine ninety-seven north, two hundred east from R one to C three, general commercial, section thirty-six of Root Township.
Yeah, it's two separate zoning, rezoning ordinances, so you need a number. And part of the next bunch of number is, so if you want to do that, Sunstone Construction One, first, it's a combined total of, looks like it's approximately two point nine one five acres. We'll have the, we've got a legal description to attach to the ordinance and that, all of that, that entire parcel. Where all of the parcels originally is combined, showing what it is now. We've got the legal description to be attached. So you just need to introduce that ordinance today and we'll table it until next week for adoption since Steve is here. That will be on the.
Yeah, and kind of going backwards because I had these previously marked for the the fire, the burn ban. So this would be Adams County Ordinance number twenty-two four eighteen, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, County of Adams, State of Indiana, which rezones the property at four four six West Washington Street, Monroe, County of Adams, State of Indiana. Whereas the applicant, as as Mark stated, is the owner of multiple parcels at approximately two point nine one five acres. The requested rezone is from a R one to a C two. Whereas Plan Commission made findings of fact related to the impact of the rezoning, that it will be attached to this ordinance as exhibit B. And the Plan Commission certified the rezoning described to the Board of Commissioners of Adams County with a due pass recommendation. So.
Yeah, it's actually, it's, yeah, there's a R one and a C two and the rezone is to a C three general.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I misspoke there. If R ones and C two to, yeah, to C three, general commercial. But again, the Plan Commission did certify the, and the rezoning described with the due pass recommendation.
And the C three as being Ryan and Richard Miller, not Sunshine. What's on the agenda?
The Ryan and Richard Miller one is also going from an R one to a C three.
This one, he said C two, but that's actually, should be C three.
Yeah, so the difference is, so this one is R one, because there are multiple parcels. There's an R one and a C two. Both are going to C three.
That just wasn't on here, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
This is the old Tri- Trailer Sales area.
Yeah.
Do you undo them together?
So, I mean, yeah, so that's just introduced for now.
Yeah, just introduce, they're separate ordinances, so I would pass the first reading of that ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't need to vote though, do they?
I have a motion to approve for that.
Yeah.
Of that ordinance.
So we need to make a motion to approve it?
To approve the first reading, okay.
Of that ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Do they wait to sign it on the second or third reading or they sign it today?
They can adopt it next week when Steve's here and then they'll sign it.
Yeah. Want me to keep it?
Yeah. And the second one will be Adams County Ordinance twenty-two four nineteen, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, County of Adams, State of Indiana, which rezones the property at six nine nine seven north, two hundred east, County of Adams, State of Indiana. As Mark stated with this one, this is two parcels of real estate totaling approximately one point three zero four acres. Again, at six nine nine seven north, two hundred east in section thirty-six of Root Township. The real estate is currently zoned as an R one and the applicant desires to rezone the described real estate to C three general commercial. The Plan Commission certified the rezoning described to the Board of Commissioners of Adams County with a due pass recommendation. So I would ask again for a motion to approve the first reading and we can adopt it next week.
So moved.
Second.
I don't have it. Did you have anything else, Mark?
I don't.
No, I think that's it.
Did you, if you remember last week, I think it was, you tabled and reserved the number for ordinance twenty-two four eleven regarding the revenue thresholds. Still looking at that?
Yes, yeah, I'm still reviewing. I'm still doing the research for that.
Okay.
Did they adopt that, Harpa?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioners had done that, I think, last week, the federal audit.
Yeah, council approved that this morning and you, the commissioners all had, we adopted that last week as the commissioners. So now it's just waiting for they can sign the copy that council. So now it's just waiting for, they can sign the copy that council signed and then we'll still be waiting on Steve's signature.
That was a resolution, wasn't it? That was a resolution.
Yeah, so I guess, it, I mean, it's.
They can sign it.
They can sign it separately and it's approved.
Yeah.
Well, that's just a small. All right, uh, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Shannon, do you have anything for us? Yeah. Anything from the general public?
I got one thing, I'm just, I better inform you, next week we'll go back to right now, Dave.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be seven to three. Time to have the three again.
All right, very good. Steve, anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, I don't think I've got anything else either, or take a motion to adjourn.
You know what, I think Tom wanted to bring Aaron down. But you can do that in, after office.
Good.
He just wanted to introduce his new, obviously, that doesn't have to be earned regularly.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second that. All right. See, we can get done faster with that.